All right, good morning. My name is Todd Caruso and I serve as the co-chair of the Governmental Affairs Committee for the Livingston Parish Chamber. Trey Sanders is the other co-chair. I'd like to first get us started by asking Buddy Mincy to come lead us in prayer, not prayer, but in a pledge.
Morning, everyone. If you would, please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Buddy. Buddy is a former school board president, so I thought it was appropriate to have him to get us started that way. We look forward as a committee to hosting this event each year because it allows us to give those that are seeking public office the opportunity to tell the community a little bit about themselves and why they're seeking that office. We're fortunate today to have the school board candidates, and I'm trying not to stand in their way. And we have four different districts that have a contested election, two candidates from each district. What we're going to do today is we're going to allow them a two-minute opportunity to tell us about themselves, what district they're running in, and why they're seeking this this public office. Then I'm going to ask four questions, and they're going to each have one minute to respond. So we'll start left to right. Mr. Brad hasn't made it, so let's see, is it on? There you go. Just so that we can kind of keep track of time, being mindful of your time as well, Trey, our co-chair, is going to kind of let you guys know when you've got 30 seconds left, okay? So two-minute introduction, and then when I answer the questions, you'll have a one-minute response, okay? Does that make sense?
Well, good morning. First of all, I want to thank the chamber for inviting all of us out. My name is Jeff Pendergrass, and I'm running for the District Four School Board seat, which encompasses all of the city limits of Denham Springs. The schools represented there are Denham Springs High, Freshman High, Junior High, Denham Springs Elementary, Northside, and Southside Junior High and Southside Elementary. I am married, been married for 33 years, have two children, four grandchildren, have a master's degree in construction management, I have a bachelor's degree in accounting and business. I'm a Navy veteran, and the majority of my life has been spent in law enforcement. I was approached by some people that I have tremendous amount of respect for, and they asked me if I would be willing to put my name into the hat to run for school board based on the the previous interaction that I've had with children throughout my career. I'm extremely passionate about our children, extremely passionate about the education that they receive, and I'm extremely passionate about Livingston Parish. I've been here my entire life with the exception of when I was on active duty in the military. And part of my promotion for the school board is, is one of the things that I want to see is I wanted to see increased security in our schools. That is, that is probably for me, one of the most important things that we could do as a school board. The second thing that I look for is I want to make sure that our teachers are represented the way that they're supposed to. I want them to have raises, I want to be able to retain them, and I also want to be able to recruit the best. I think that we have the ability to do that if we buckle down and we all move forward in the same same manner. So I would appreciate your support if you're in my district on November the 8th. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kaitlyn Lockhart-Cocherham. I am running in District Seven, which encompasses a large portion of the Walker area. I was born and raised in Walker with lots of my family before me graduating from Walker High. After graduation, I went to LSU where I studied business and marketing. I started working for the Shaw Group in 2007 and worked with them through their acquisition by CBNI. I eventually left CBNI and joined Epic Piping here in Livingston Parish, where I worked in estimating and business development. Once I had my first child, I decided to leave the corporate world and took a job in the private sector right here in Walker, working for Livingston Parish Work Release, where I currently serve as vice president, handling all business aspects from payroll, bills, budgeting, staffing, and also maintaining compliance with state and federal agencies. I'm currently a 32-year-old mother of three young children, Nolan, Mary Catherine, and Stella. I am a Republican and a lifelong member of Immaculate Conception Church in Denham, where I currently teach catechism. In the past, I've served on the board for the Baton Rouge St. Jude Walk Run, and I currently serve on the board for the Chippin Inn Golf Tournament benefiting St. Jude here in Denham, where we've cumulatively raised over 1.2 million dollars for St. Jude in the last seven years. I'm a recent Leadership Livingston graduate from the through the Chamber of Commerce, where I'm still currently working with a local nonprofit to better enhance their building to serve children in our area with disabilities. As your board member, there are many things I want to focus on. Number one, not just reacting to growth, but forecasting and planning for the rapid growth that our parish is seeing. Number two, acquiring the best teachers, no secret that we're in a teacher shortage crisis. And number three, retaining those experienced teachers to that we rely on to foster their education, extracurriculars, et cetera. Thank you.
Two minutes is going to be tough. I'll do my best. My name is Ryan Pope. I'm running for District Seven here in Walker, mostly encompasses, like Caitlin said, the southern part of Walker here that we have. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Walker, with the exception of the time that I spent off-campus at LSU. I have a bachelor's degree in education and in 2002 became a teacher here in Livingston Parish, where I served 12 proud years as a teacher and coach at Southside Junior High in Denham Springs. Upon having an opportunity to leave, I left and entered the private sector and the oil and gas industry. And I have currently been employed with the same company now for the last seven years, doing sales with safety supplies and so forth. Being a teacher, former student in this in this parish, this parish is very near and dear to me. It's something I'm very passionate about as well. I decided to run for school board because of that passion and how it overfelt. Let's see, sorry about this. I have a family lineage of very lifelong educators here in Livingston Parish, and that was beset to me years ago, the value of education, specifically in Livingston Parish. I volunteer coach still today at North Corbin Junior High, and being involved heavily in this parish is something that means a lot to me. As school board member, I continue to work hard and fight for those students and those kids. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ron McMorris, and I'm running for the school board, District Eight. It's lower Livingston area. I'm a Christian, a Republican. I have a seven-year-old daughter with 11 years left in the school system, so I invested in the well-being and education of our kids. My family and I are lifelong residents of Lower Livingston, dating back to grandparents, so District Eight is personal to me. When I stand up here and talk to you, everything that I talk to you about, it has a personal meaning. I started this journey when someone posted on Facebook, "It's a shame that our kids at Frost School have gutters being held up with duct tape, and other kids are playing in multimillion-dollar facilities." Our kids deserve a covered area to wait for the bus in. They deserve dry ground, walking to the bus. They deserve clean bathrooms. They deserve updated bathrooms. They deserve clean drinking water, and the list can go on about what we deserve in Lower Livingston. I want to be the person to bring that to Lower Livingston and make sure our kids are getting what they deserve. Our teachers deserve to wake up in the morning and be happy and proud to go do something they absolutely love and know that someone in the administration has their back. Someone is going to support them throughout this journey. District Eight needs a strong voice. It needs strong leadership. It needs a visionary who's going to look at not only today what we need, but five years, 10 years, 15 years down the road. Teachers, I didn't walk in your shoes, but I'm a blank canvas for you. Talk to me. I'm here to help. I've heard you. I heard you're tired of being micromanaged. I heard you're tired of people testing you in ways that are unfair to you and your specific system. It's not the same for you as it is for everybody else. In 2010, Eddie Burtner took a chance on me with First Guaranteed Bank when nobody else would. I'm asking you, November, November 2022, to take a chance on me as well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Monica Sullivan. I'm also running for District Eight School Board seat. I am a retired teacher with 27 years in the system. I have a degree in education with a kindergarten add-on. I also have a master's in reading, so I'm a reading specialist. I served 17 years in the classroom, Springfield and Mariposa. My last 10 years, I served at the central office. I was the 504 dyslexia coordinator for the Livingston Parish School System. I supervised 47 schools, every principal in every school I've worked with, and every teacher and every administrator. I also sat on expulsion hearings regularly for all of my 504 students. I am a voice for the teachers. I've been there. I hear them. All of my friends are teachers, so it's like a 24/7 news report. So I do hear, and I'm here to support our teachers. Also, I have three daughters that went through the school system, graduated from Springfield High School. So not only am I a teacher and educator, a central office employee, I'm also a parent. I was also a student at Springfield High School, so I serve in many capacities. I feel like I'm easy to work with. I feel like I will listen to what the people want. And also Springfield, Mariposa, and French Settlement is dear to my heart. That's where I grew up. That's where I live, and our community does deserve better. Our schools are in bad condition. District Eight has really been neglected for a long time, and it's time that that changes, and I'm here to make the change. My husband said, "Why do you want to do that? Why do you want to run for school board? You're retired. You're peaceful." And I said, "Well," I said, "I want to give back." I said, "I have a lot of experience. I have a lot of experience in the classroom and as a central office worker." Another thing I bring to the table is I've been all over the parish, so I've worked on live vote school system. I've worked all over. So I can relate that to Springfield and bring good ideas and just network with the other leaders in our community. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Devin Gregwell. I am the current school board member for Albany District Nine. And on as my tenure, as the as the current school board member, I've been involved in many different aspects of the school system. My wife's been a teacher. My mom was a teacher. My brother's a teacher. My family has been involved in education. I was educational director for Associated Builders and Contractors in two different states, and I have an an educational background that has a diversity like no other with it with adult education, child education, so forth and so on. As a school board member, I actively work with the local school system and Albany Community to pass a sales tax to renovate our schools and bring our schools up to date. We're working on projects now for the cafeteria at the Upper Lower. Our upper elementary, the building is like 116 years old. We actually don't know how old it is because all the records are gone. That's how old our buildings are, and we're we're in the process of renovating that now. I created a COVID catch-up program. So because of all the inconsistencies in 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 our education over the past few years, I created a program called the Hornet Academy, which takes all the students across the summer and gives them another, it's a two-week program that allows them to get caught up with any deficiencies they had in the previous grades and also get ahead on the on the new grades. Other projects, I'm the only board member currently on the board that has been a certified board member by the LSBA for the past four years, and I hope to continue to serve in in every aspect that I can. Thank you.
My name's Steve Link. It might say Steven up here, but oops, it says Steve. A lot of my stuff around here has said Steven. I want to first thank the chamber for inviting me and for having this group here today. I'm I'm glad that we have such great candidates. As I listen to all the things that they're saying here, it's really impressive and for Livingston Parish and for everything for our school system. It bodes well. I am originally from Tenchbahoe, but I moved to Livingston Parish in Albany 25 years ago with my wife. I started out as a teacher there at Albany Middle. I moved across as my profession and went as I went to the next levels of assistant principal, principal. I went to Holden. I've been I've been here in Walker, and I come from a family similar probably to Ryan and Devin and some of these other people up here that have been eat, breathe, education. And my father was a four-term school board member in Tenchbahoe Parish, Alink. And by watching him, watching his career, going through those things, and then being able to give back for those terms kind of piqued my interest and allowed me to be able to go to the next level in my career here. So I would appreciate any your vote. I thank you for inviting me here and appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Harris, we're allowing each candidate to give us a two-minute introduction and tell us about yourself.
Hey, good morning, everyone. My name is Brad Harris. I'm the current school board member for District Four. Thank y'all for coming this morning. I've lived in Livingston Parish all my life, graduated from Denham Springs. I've got two boys that graduated from Denham Springs in 2018, 2020. Went through the COVID with them. I have a wife named Luana for 35 years, my better half. And some of the some of the accomplishments we did, especially in District Four, we were hit very hard by the flood like everybody else really quick. We did the new Southside Elementary, Southside Junior High, which we got into, the new Denham Springs Elementary. One little snippet, I mean, number one, kids are first, period, across the board. Try to take care of the teachers, give them as much raises as possible, what we can and can sustain. So we're all pro giving teachers and try to get them much because teachers are shortage. We got to get them. We got to. We got to get them in college. We got to get them out. We got to do that. But real quick, one thing when we were doing the opening of Denham Springs Elementary that hit me probably the hardest, you know, and a parent, a kid came up to me and said, "This is the first time my kid has been in a permanent school." Think about that. Those kids who went through the flood hadn't been in a permanent school for that long, and and that hit. It wasn't real to that part, and that really hit me hard. And thank God, the kids who've gone through Southside and all that have now gone to a permanent school. And some of those kids have never been in that permanent school. Some of them missed elementary school for the Southside, but now are there. Thank you. Great candidates, guys. Thank y'all for holding us long.
So we're still on. Thank you all. So since we we went left to right, we'll start going right to left with the with the questions. I'll ask the first question for the District Nine candidates, but each of you are going to have one minute to respond, okay? Trey is going to give you that 30-second warning or notice as well. Okay, so Mr. Link, we'll start with you. As a school board member, you will have many responsibilities. Of those, what do you think is the most important for parents and their children?
That's very difficult because there are many, many things that are important. I think the safety of the children is going to be number one. Safety and security, as we've seen in Uvalde in Texas and the things that are going on, that that's a concern that parents have because that's the first thing you have to have is a is a trust of your school system, the ability to know that when you send your child to to school, they're going to be able to have a safe, happy educational day, and they're going to be able to come home safe and secure. So for me, that would be about the number one thing would be safety and security. Next probably would be, of course, the curriculum. I think that curriculum is very important, what the children are taught, how they're taught it, and our teachers, of course, along with that. Teacher's very, very important in that we have to, we have to pay them well and we have to support them well. So but yeah, safety and security of the child first, and then what they're being taught and how they're being taught it.
The as a school board member, there are so many decisions you have to make, so many aspects of the school system that you have to deal with. The most important thing is always keep the children first. They're first in your minds. They're the first concerns. So whatever aspect of of your position as your decisions to make at the school board, keeping the children first is the most important thing, so.
I think safety also is very important, top of the list. When I was in the classroom, every year we had mock drills with the sheriff's office, and some of it made sense. I'm sure it made sense to the sheriff's office, but as a teacher, we were expected to think an intruder's coming in, lock the door, keep 20 kids safe. So I think there's a disconnect, and I really think we need a committee of teachers and sheriff's office deputies and the sheriff to come together with a better plan that teachers can actually do because teachers are not law enforcement. And so it is a big disconnect, so I feel that safety, safety first, curriculum second. And as a teacher, when the State Department passes down curriculum, we need to know how to decipher that and what's important because we don't need to just keep pushing, pushing whatever they pass down because I'm here to tell you, it's not all right. Thank you.
The curriculum is absolutely important, but as the main role of the school board member is the financial integrity of the school, not the curriculum. So as your school board member, safety to me is not only the securing the schools, but it has, it's an umbrella, making sure the kids are safe going to school with the buses. The buses, it's my understanding, the kids are hotter these days because of these buses. They are different than the buses we rode to school in. Making sure the kids are safe at school while they're at school, making sure there we have, we have schools in Lower Livingston. You could walk directly into it at any point of the day. Not only at school, but also sport safety. Sport safety, making sure our kids have the safety when they're playing an athletic sport, home and away. And then bullying. These kids are being bullied, and it is a problem in our schools that we must address, and that is also part of the safety umbrella. Thank you.
Right. Arriving at one of these issues is going to be very difficult. Obviously, I think we all agree that safety is paramount. Teacher shortages are on the rise. We must effectively find a way to recruit and retain teachers, whether that be through salary increase, incentives. Teachers aren't allowed to teach anymore, and people are leaving this business as a result of that, and it's it's difficult. The curriculum, I believe now we are educating instead of not educating, we are being mandated to teach a certain thing. Life skills, over standardized test skills. We need to teach kids how to think, not what to think. The curriculum is probably the most important thing. Thank you.
Okay, as both your board member and a parent of a child in the school system, what I think it all boils down to is maintaining the budget because everything comes, everything's traced back to the money. Keeping the the schools safe has to do with the budget. Keeping the teachers paid, maintaining the budget. Keeping the buildings, facilities up to up to par. We want the kids in safe buildings, quality buildings. Like I said, the more you're paying the teachers, the better teachers you're getting. So I think everything goes back to adequately managing the budget that the school board is given every year.
Thank you for the question. In my initial opening statements, when I stated as being a law enforcement officer, the security of it is paramount. I would also say that probably the most important thing for parents and and students is that you have a board that understands they have a fiduciary responsibility when it comes to the money. Everything to echo Caitlin, everything is dependent upon money, how we budget our money, the things that we spend our money on. So for me, I know as a parent and actually as a grandparent now, for me, it's it's about the money. It's where the money is going and how we are effectively and efficiently using the taxpayers' dollars.
Hey, guys. Thank you.
Are we on?
Hey, thank you. A couple of real things real quick. I think statistics have shown, first thing we did is get our kids back in school as quickly as possible. That is, that is very important, which means it's all about the kids. It was also shown that basically in-class learning was a whole lot better than being online. Ideas for the parents coming out of COVID real quick. I'm sympathetic also to the parents on this because when they had COVID leave, basically everybody's COVID leave was up at that time and basically getting those kids in, and it proved it was real quick. Funding is very important also and managing the funding the best you can in the ways that the money has to be spent. Everything, just because there's money out there, can't be spent the same way. SRO, keeping our kids safe, is also very important. We put in as many SRO officers, school resource officers, and we also are going in and partnering also with the sheriff's office and the city police officers in every way we can and adding to those. So we're all so conscious of that.
Thank you, candidates. And so we'll start with District Eight with the with question number two. So Ms. Sullivan. The Industrial Tax Exemption Program, or ITIP, offers incentives for existing businesses to expand and to attract new businesses to our parish. What is your view on this program?
Well, I've spoken already to several of our aldermen from Springfield, and our town, I don't know if you've driven past it lately, but it looks like a ghost town. And so we are working on a committee to do a beautification law, but also try to attract new businesses and tax incentives. But we're just, as a small rural community, it's very hard to attract new businesses because the land is locked by like three landowners in my little town. Mariposa also, there's not much land there that's for sale. French Settlement has the biggest opportunity. There are more areas to bring businesses in because you need the space. And like I said, Springfield has little space and none of it's for sale. Mariposa has no space. French Settlement has more opportunity. So I just can do the best I can with what we have and work with our local aldermen in each town.
This is a great question for Lower Livingston because we're probably the poorest of all the towns that are out there. So bringing in opportunities for businesses to come in, we need to get the businesses involved with the schools, and we need to get the kids involved with the businesses. We need to give the kids a reason to come back to Lower Livingston and start their business in Lower Livingston when they have an opportunity to do so. We need trade schools. Jason St. Pierre has created a great model at Walker High School, and there's no reason, French Settlement, Mariposa, Springfield, we can't do the same. We can combine schools, combine efforts. We can have businesses between the schools where both schools are utilizing. We can educate these kids. We can bring in trade schools. We can bring in trade employment. So when these kids graduate high school, a lot of them aren't going to college. So they can graduate high school and go off to college, I'm sorry, and go off into the work environment. So thank you.
Well, as he said, in the Walker districts here, Jason St. Pierre has essentially paved the way for a lot of this instruction. I think whenever we were in school, the idea was is that high school was preparing people for college, higher education beyond. What Jason St. Pierre has done is he has kind of broken the mold on that. He has offered dozens of programs that aren't necessarily college preparatory. I think that he hones in on the fact that not all students are college material, and he finds a way to get the best out of those kids and allows them to be successful and productive citizens in society. Thank you.
Okay, so I think tax exemptions like this are obviously great for the area. The more businesses that we can bring in, the more tax dollars that those businesses are generating for our area and ultimately our schools. As I said, when I worked at Epic Piping years ago, and one thing that or the thing that brought them to this area, number one was the land. Number two was the tax exemptions that they were offered throughout the parish. And I think that can be nothing but good for the school system as a whole, not just the, not just the tax dollars, but bringing in the people, the families, et cetera, that are coming with these businesses to the areas.
That's a very good question. I think the four of us are very fortunate that we live in districts that have a lot of industry. I do also echo the sentiment that we have to have incentives to bring more businesses into the area. I would also like to to see, and and I'm not privy of how the board does this as of yet, but I would also like to see how we can do shared revenue. I don't know if it's possible. I don't know with the bylaws or or how the the actual finances are ran as of right now, but I would love to.
or how the, the actual finances are ran as of right now, but I would love to see, take for example, tax revenue that comes in from Bass Pro, and to be split equally amongst all of the, the different districts. I, I think that you have to continue to bring newer industry, newer business, newer tax revenue in, to continue to grow what we already have and make it better. Thank you.
ITEP, that's a, that's a very interesting question on that part. Basically, the, the tax, whenever that's calculated out, it needs to make sense, first of all. Give, I'm all for it if it brings in new jobs, new industry, if it takes away taxes out of, for the initial part, and there's no guarantee of that to continuation. Honestly, I'm against that part, but I'm also for bringing in new business and stuff like that. I think there needs to be some type of guarantee at the end of ITEP, somebody just didn't pick up and move because they don't get the taxes on that part. The, the other part, and so on that part, I think actually the Bass Pro is already kind of split up, and we don't, we don't get all the, the funding for that, it's percentage throughout the parish. But as far, what I would like to see, the ITEP part is actually, which is not in there, I would actually like to see us being able to negotiate, which is not part of it, what percentage we're willing to give up, instead of it's a set percentage that's passed down. Thank you.
Well, similar to Monica and the situation down in Springfield, we're landlocked in a lot of those ways also. I'm a Republican, I'm a pro-business guy, I wish we had more businesses. I'd like to work with the, the council as they're elected there in Albany to, to try to bring in more business, to try to get business there, then start talking about taxes and things like that. We would love to have that tax base. We do have some very fine businesses there, but getting it growing and up is going to be a challenge because, again, of the, the landlocked type of situation we have there. But I think that it is possible. I'm always for business, I'm always for working with business to have the partnerships. I know, as Ryan talked about, Jason St. Pierre with the situation, I was right across the street from him, he's innovated a lot of things there with the school business partnerships, and I, I think that would be great for us if we could, if we could alleviate some of those other problems that we have in doing so. Thank you.
So the ITEP program, the Industrial Tax Exemption Program, it was started years and years and years ago, and when it was initially, up until 20, about 2018, 2019, it was, you could give 100% tax exemption to any industry in Louisiana for as long as you really wanted to. It was governed by a state body, and in 2018 or 2019, the governor reassigned it and allowed the local entities to have a voice in it. He also refined it down to only 20, 80% exemption for a five-year period with a, an automatic five-year extension as long as they fulfilled all their, all their needs. That program is going to go away. We've tried several times in the legislature to make it permanent. When we, when we vote in our next governor, that governor has the ability to take that program away and give it back to the state. I think it's real important that we talk to our representatives and, and ask them to make sure that, that program stays permanent, so our boards have a decision, have the decision.
Thank you, candidates. And several of you have, have already touched on topic number three, or question number three, but this will allow you to elaborate a little more, and we'll start with Mr. Pope in District Seven. So personnel shortages, both teachers and support staff are affecting our school system greatly. What solutions would you suggest to address those shortages?
Thank you for the question. First and foremost, I think that Livingston Parish has fallen in a sense slightly on what teachers are being paid compared to neighboring parishes. If you want good employees in any form of business, you're going to have to pay them better than what we are. On top of that, teachers feel undervalued. Teacher morale is low right now. Curriculum ideas that teachers are bringing to the, to, to a lot of these board members are not being listened to. There are, you know, these teachers are going back with these, these great ideas collectively. They bring it to people that could impact this curriculum, and not a whole lot's being done. So a lot of these teachers are feeling undervalued, and as a result, are leaving the business. So pay, and, you know, just that feeling of being valued for, for what they know they do in this business. Thank you.
Okay, I think we can all agree, pay is a huge one. There's a billboard on Florida Boulevard, right when you're leaving Walker High, that Ascension's paying 10 grand more starting out. We've got to do better than that. Getting some teachers out of retirement, I think, would be huge, because such a large portion of the budget is spent on benefits. So rather than hiring new, fresh out of, fresh out of college teachers and picking up new benefits, if we could pull some of those, you know, 50-year-olds that still have plenty of time left to teach back into the classroom, would be huge. But they don't want to, because they're not supported, whether it's by their administration, by the parents, et cetera. They, like so many people have said, sorry, they've had, they have no control over, no creative control over their classroom. We've, we've got to do better at, just in general, supporting, paying our teachers.
Again, another good question, and I think we all agree in some form or fashion. I would like to expound a little bit on how you give raises, you retain, and you recruit. I think that we have opportunity within the budget that we can streamline services. There are things that we can look at from a monetary standpoint, again, of how we're spending our money, where our money's going, and we can be more effective in the way that we put that money out. I know that there's a push possibly for a tax increase for, for our teachers, and that's something that I don't think the parish is, is going to be able, you know, as voters, is going to be able to sustain. We're already one of the highest tax parishes in the state. However, I do believe 100%, there are opportunities within our standing budget right now, that we can make more effective decisions to give our teachers more money and retain them. Thank you.
And I agree with everybody else. Basically, it's going to take higher-paid salaries, as far as that part goes. We lost more teachers this year than previous years to the surrounding parishes who are paying more, and that's just the way it is at the moment. The, the next part is, we, I'd like to see us incentivize, say, some of the harder subjects that are out there, those teachers, and supplement those, and get those guys in here, the calculuses, the chemistries and all that. You can't find those guys out there, they're in high demand. It does become an equity situation. We can't, I mean, I know in our parish, we look at everything from the parish as a whole, it's not like, hey, we're in Denham, we can pay more over here than that, because that would pull teachers from other parts, and we're very cognizant of that, and those are things that we don't try to do. But, I mean, I think there is a foot fourth of pay raise coming up, as far as that part goes, and taxes. One other thing I wanted to say is, I think there is something with legislation that just got passed, where some of our older teachers can come into play and get their full salaries and different things like that, which is going to bring those guys in. So, thank you.
I think the most important thing for Livingston Parish, and that's what we're talking about, Livingston Parish, is being in the system for almost 30 years, is to let people know. I know you see on television in the national news, there's a lot of bashing of teachers. You see it online, you see it everywhere, that, that teachers are this, and they're teaching kids that, and blah, blah, blah. The truth is here in Livingston Parish, that the vast majority of people that live here, that work here, live here, have lived here for years. We did, we do a very good job of hiring local kids that come out of college, LSU, Southeastern, and these people here in our parish are, for the most part, Christian conservative, want the best for the kids, will give their whole life for those kids. So first thing is to do that, and to recognize that, and not take that national media stuff and push it down to our teachers. The next thing would be, of course, is pay to bring them up to the, to the salaries that they need, and to reduce paperwork so they can do their jobs. Thank you.
So in Livingston Parish, in the school board in general, we've, we've got a saying that we've done a lot more with a lot less, and we've, we've consistently done more with less. We're in the, we're in the top 10 school systems in the state. We, we actively look to the legislature to try to reduce some of the burdens on our teachers. As far as the pay goes, we are working on, on different issues and trying to create dollars that just, really, they aren't there. But we're, we're working on that. I was, I support the teachers in just every aspect. When, one of the things about my, the Hornet Academy is, we allowed the teachers to actually teach the classes. There was no set structure that came down from the state. Teachers love that. So we need to get back to that, where the teachers are actually teaching, doing what they were trained to do, instead of teaching from a script.
Well, I feel as a teacher, it comes down to pay. The pay is not very good. 30 years when I graduated, I was happy, I was excited to be an educator, very excited. You get out into the educational world, and it's not just the $50,000 that you're making today. You put in about 12 to sometimes 15 hours a day doing lesson plans and planning. So when you break it down to your hourly pay, teachers are not paid very well. So it's not a lack of love for teaching, because you go into education because you do love it. Also, your parents, parents are a big part of your school system. They're very underpaid. Spoke to one the other day, she makes a thousand a month. I don't know who can live off of that. She'd make more working at Target. So we need to do better, because it's not going to fix things. As far as retirement, they've changed the percentage that retired teachers like myself can go in, but it's still not a year. You can teach for about five months. So that's, it's, it's better, but there's still improvement.
I 100% agree our teachers need to be paid more. I'm absolutely behind that. But when I ask teachers, why are you leaving? Why do you want to leave? They're unhappy. They're, they're unhappy. Teachers don't go into teaching for the money, they go into it because they love it. My sister was a teacher. I pay attention, I watch things that go on around in my environment, and I see years ago, teachers being happy, trying to get other kids to be teachers, and now they're not leading them to be a teacher. Why would you do this? Why, they're micromanaged, they're not able to teach the, the curriculum they want to teach, they're not able to do the things that they went to school and they have a passion for. If you don't get to do what you have a passion for, you don't enjoy it, you don't want to be there. So how do we retain teachers? We get that fire and that passion back to them, we'll have the teachers. When we have the teachers, we'll find the money. We'll make sure they're making the money they deserve to make, and not live in paycheck to paycheck if they are unable to provide for their families. Thank you.
So we'll start here in District Four for the last question. If you win this election, how can you make the biggest impact?
If I win this election, God, the, the biggest impact would be just to continue on, keeping our kids in school. I think we'll, we'll run into some different issues with COVID probably coming up, possibly some other issues that probably aren't very popular in Livingston Parish that we'll have to, to deal with, as to the curriculums and different things like that. I mean, I'll let you know where I stand on that. I think everybody has a choice to be vaccinated or not, but that's not something I'd be pushing on our kids as far as that part goes. Curriculums, I mean, I'm a Christian, and basically I'll use Christian values, basically, as far as where I stand on all the different decisions that I will make. And then as far as keeping and trying to continuation with the funding of teachers and, and keeping in our budgets, then I'll do their, I'll do that also. So one particular thing is just keeping our schools updated. One thing I will say, though, the, the impact really on financial situation today is not the same as it was yesterday. Hundreds of thousands of dollars now mean millions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Another good question. If I am elected, the main thing that, that the people of District Four will get from me is 100% transparency in every single thing that I do. There will be a personal accountability to those people that have decided to elect me, and there, within that comment, there will also be 100% personal responsibility. I think that it is absolutely imperative for our elected officials to be, to have access, for, for the people to have access to them, regardless of what their problems are, regardless of what our personal viewpoints may be about certain things. I think that as an elected official, we have to be transparent, we have to be accountable, and we have to be responsible to those people that elected us. Thank you.
All right. If I'm elected, I think the biggest thing that I'm going to bring is a very loud, very proud voice for not only Walker, but for the entire parish. I think I have strong leadership skills, I am willing to sit down with anyone, I'm a hard worker, and I think I'm going to bring a fresh, clean perspective on a lot of issues that the school board is tackling right now.
Thank you. I believe what I bring to the table, if elected, is a unique, two-sided perspective, from both the educational side of things, being a teacher, being an educator, being a coach, and then being in the private sector as well, being on the business end of things. I understand how to balance budgets, I understand how to manage finances, I understand how to examine where finances are being used, but I also understand the other avenue of it too, from the teachers. I'm married to a teacher. I'm the son of two very successful Livingston Parish educators. What I bring to the table with that perspective, not many can say. So having that viewpoint and that angle enables me to see things from a full scope of these issues that we're going to have to tackle as school board members. Thank you.
District Eight, if you choose to elect me as your Livingston Parish School Board Representative, I'm going to bring a strong voice, I'm going to bring ears to hear your problems and your concerns, I'm going to have the heart to stand up, I'm going to bring the leadership and work with the other school board members to bring to Lower Livingston what we've needed for so long. If you're not from Lower Livingston, you may not understand what I'm talking about, but if you are from the other, the other part of the parish, you understand exactly what I'm talking about. I'll bring the leadership that you've been listening for, the visionary. I went from absolutely having nothing, it took 10 things for my dad and I, to find someone to take a chance on us, and it gave me the opportunity today, because of the leadership I'm talking about, to stand up here and deliver this speech to y'all today. Thank you again, District Eight, I'll make you proud.
Well, I have a little bit of a different approach than I guess everyone. I plan to put my boots on the floor and go into the schools. And whether it's doing lunchroom duty, or collecting money for ball games, I want to be part of that school. I am retired, so I have 100% time on my hands, and I want the teachers to feel like, hey, that's my school board member, hey, Monica, I need this, instead of what I was used to, it's like, oh, they're a school board member, you know, we didn't talk to them, we didn't see them. You know, I know things have changed, but I want to be part of that school system and help the schools where they need it. Teachers eat lunch with their kids every day. Maybe I could give a, a break, an hour break. I just think hands-on and being in the school system, and really being more personable with our teachers and educators and administration is what I'd like to offer. Thank you.
If I'm reelected to District Nine, I will continue to advocate. I'll continue to advocate for the kids, to make sure they have the best facilities, to make sure that their curriculum is updated, to make sure they have the best technology. I will continue to advocate for the teachers, to, to give them incentives whenever I can, to advocate for them at every level of government, to make sure that they're not overburdened with, with paper and, and, and other people's opinions. I will continue to advocate for the schools, to make sure that our schools get the same as the other schools in the parish. I will continue to advocate for the principals. I have a principals meeting once a month, and we go over any issues that they're having at the schools, to make sure that the, the kid's safety, the teacher's safety, the, the campuses, any issues that they have with maintenance. We go over all that during our principals meetings, and so my, my biggest effect out here is advocating, advocating for the students, the teachers, the parents, and the schools.
My number one strength, I think...
My number one strength, I think, that I will bring to the table is relationships. That's the word I would like people to remember on me. I've built relationships over 30 years here in the parish at all different levels. I've been at Albany. I've been at schools in Holden. I've also been right here in Walker. A lot of you know me, a lot of you have seen me here in Walker also. I know, not as well as somebody that lives here, but I know the people. I think that's going to allow me to reach across the board lines there to understand some of the things that they're having problems with and to get, and to understand how we can build more relationships to leverage those things for my people over in the Albany area. I've been, again, I've been a teacher. I know what teachers are feeling. I have been a ministrator. I know what they're feeling. I've been around with the kids and the people and I know what the people want in that. So relationship, if the last thing you want to know, trust and relationship, number one. Thank you. Before we close, I think we can all agree that running for public office is not for the faint of heart. So I want to first thank each of you guys for your willingness to serve our school system. And let's give these candidates a round of applause.